All right, being that it's 6:30, we will call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very power that for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every nation its own court. Roll call.
Ms. Madison?
Here.
Joe Hayberly?
Present.
Mary Maxey?
Here.
Tom Moon?
Present.
Ed Mahollen?
Here.
Brian Rinder?
Here.
Dan Moore?
All right. We're looking for motion to approve the agenda. Pull that bill off on the side so that we get something on the minutes about what it's about. Okay, so which, you know, item you want to pull? And we'll make it a new one under new business?
Um...
You can actually do it in front of...
Uh...
We've got bills under new business.
I didn't make...
So we'll make a D. For the IRS fine. Pointing IRS fine up the post.
AA.
Nothing first or do motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Audience to visitors. I see none. We'll move on to the treasures report.
As presented, if you're listening and have any questions.
All right, if they're on, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
That is me, and we have a very, very productive and congratulatory month here. We've got two different groups. We've got our wrestlers that are here. We've got our cheerleaders that are here. Our cheerleaders made state. I got a chance to go down and see them. Congratulations, girls. Thank you very much for coming tonight. What we wanted to do was recognize you a little bit. Kim and Crystal, was there anything you wanted to add? You guys did a nice job down there. Thirteenth overall, is that what? It was very good, and your routine was, you got, well, I was going to use a bad term there, but you could have done, you should have done better, I thought, with your score. But you guys did a very nice job.
See, it's just the beginning for us. We think we have a strong program for years to come.
So we'll do the certificates for the cheerleaders here, and then Zach? And is Kate here? Kate's not here? All right, so Zach, you're next. We'll talk about you next, though. Get your speech ready, okay? So when we call your name, come on up. We've got a little certificate for you. Can we have Katie Kilburn? Is Katie here? Ashley Groomes? Ashley's not here. Emma Mark? Congratulations, Emma. Marina Monta, there. I know I saw you on the...
Yeah, I'd like to...
We're going to get some...
That way we can help out you up there.
Love it. Kerry Kilburn? Hannah Underwood? Is anyone here? How about Kylie Nelson? Alyssa Anderson? Alexis Seba? Thank you, Dennis Rodman. I really appreciate it. Uh, Emma Blissinski? Jenna Shatt? Indonesia? Indonesian? Was I close? Good afternoon. Congratulations, girls. Come on over here, get out of your way, and let Mr. Cooper take a picture, and then we'll make sure we get some of that to our website. You want them to scoot together a little closer?
Yeah.
You guys should be...
Yeah, yeah. Why don't I just go out and grab them and...
No.
Sorry, girls.
One.
Girls, awesome year. Congratulations.
Nice job, coaches.
Thank you. Thanks for all your precious support. Really appreciate it.
Do you have a seat now?
I will be.
Great. We also had a wrestler make the state tournament this weekend. Zach? Congratulations. Remember, the person you wrestled in the state?
Yeah.
Well, good. No, congratulations. Come on over here. We got a, you got us a person to intro.
Yeah.
Three. Awesome job, Zach. Congratulations. One of the things, I was able to get the girls' article into the shopper. I had to turn it in late just before you made it, otherwise I would have made sure that we got an honorable narrative, too. But I wanted you to know that, so, Zach, awesome job. Great work. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we'll let you off the hook.
For committee. Thank you, guys, very much. You're more than welcome to stay, but we really appreciate you coming in and great job.
Thank you.
Thursday, yep.
Take your homework. No, I got a couple other things. You know, I couldn't pass up that easy. Last week on Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I was in Chicago at the ESSA conference, and they were talking about putting together their final guidelines and report for the federal government, which needs to be turned in by April 3rd. They're talking about four different accountability things for the new ESSA law, which would be overall student achievement, English language proficiency, growth measures. They're working on the details with all these, and also graduation rate is some of the things that they're working on there. The other thing that they are adding to it is some other student success indicators that districts will be allowed to show, such as attendance rate, college and career readiness for ninth graders, and then climate surveys. So, a little more of an encompassing picture than just having what, how you did with Park. The other thing that they said is, is with the new regulations, it could affect how title money is distributed, possibly even how you write for your Title I grants, so I wanted to let you know about that. Becky Gieske and Christie Franzine put books in your folders for you. It's one book, one school. Again, that they're passing out books to all of their students in their schools to promote reading down there, so Poplar Grove is pushing their reading and has shared books with you guys for upcoming weeks, if you'd like to read that. Couple other smaller things. Well, one is Poplar Grove, the village, is entertaining, possibly putting in a 280 mobile home subdivision now down next to the post office on Poplar Grove Road. That's still in the discussion stages, but it could be something that may have impact or impact fees for the district. As I hear more or notice or see anything come about that, I'll share that with you guys as well. We did find some old paperwork about impact fees that we had, depending on the numbers of bedrooms and stuff like that, so, but I'm assuming that we would have to enter into another agreement with whoever it is. No, we don't, Don?
Sorry, one they have on the book.
Say that again.
There's already one that they have on the book.
Say, so we can just use that?
Lot, yeah.
Okay.
Renegotiated. It wasn't a bad, in fact, it...
Okay, good, good, good. I have, it's based on number of bedrooms and attached versus detached, single families and apartments. What I will do is scan the document that I have, and I'll send that out to all of you, okay?
Yeah.
And it was hard. We had to really work hard to track that, too, so, thanks, Don. I appreciate that, though. We've got something to look at. And then the last thing that I've got is, when we get to committees, I've got some dates for policy and curriculum that I'm hoping work, and then, Tom, I'll need to talk to you about facilities. We have bids opened up March 2nd, so, that's all I have for superintendent's report.
All right. Move on to committee reports. Policy committee.
Meeting debated, determined.
Policy, we were directed by the board last meeting to have policy and curriculum, a joint meeting, and I've got some other curriculum items I'd like to share. Would March 13th, which is a Monday, work for both of those, Don? Later in the night for you?
Yeah, 6:30 is about 3:00.
6:30?
About 6:00.
Okay. My hope was March 13th, we would do the curriculum from 4:30 until 6:00, and then start policy at 6:30 on the dinner available, so we can do the joint policy curriculum meeting together there that evening, you know, we'll hit that night if that works for you guys. Sure.
All right, we'll move on to business services.
Did that mean, I think we're going to have a meeting soon, though. Don't we need one by?
I don't know about business. We will facilities. Julia, do you see any business meetings at this point? If we do, though, Brian, I'll get in touch with you.
Okay. Facility run, change, planning committee?
Yeah, facilities, we'll have to do something once bids are back in. Bids are due for the windows and the roof at the middle school, March 2nd, so I'll meet Jim and Greg Solid to speak to us a little bit and make recommendations, and then we'll have to finalize plans for summer work. So, I'll work, Tom, I'll get in touch with you to set up a date.
I can make anything, Nate, if they can come up with it.
Okay, good deal. All right, CIA, we already, general meeting, solid in the air for us. So move on to the consent agenda.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes. We pulled the IRS fine out of new, February 27th, bills new business and made it a stolen item.
Is there any discussion or a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion, second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Joe Hayberly?
Yes.
Mary Maxey?
Yes.
Ed Mahollen?
Yes.
Brian Rinder?
Yep.
And Dan Moore?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to item nine, unfinished business. Second item and approval of policies.
Nothing to add, just the approvals. Let the board move forward with the policies we brought back in last week. Motion to approve business.
So what did we do with 16th, Tom?
16th, that's the one we're going to meet on March 13th to discuss and...
I get knocked off here somewhere.
We're waiting on stuff.
Second.
Roll call.
Ed Mahollen?
Yes.
Brian Rinder?
Yep.
Dan Moore?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to item nine, unfinished business. Second item and approval of policies.
Nothing to add, just the approvals. Let the board move forward with the policies we brought back in last week. Motion to approve business.
So what did we do with 16th, Tom?
16th, that's the one we're going to meet on March 13th to discuss and...
I get knocked off here somewhere.
We're waiting on stuff.
Second.
Roll call.
Ed Mahollen?
Yes.
Tom Moon?
Yes.
Ed Mahollen?
Yes.
Brian Rinder?
Yep.
Dan Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Allison?
Yes.
Ed Mahollen?
Yes.
Brian Rinder?
Yep.
Dan Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Allison?
Yes.
Motion to move on to item V, decision systems.
Yeah, this was asked of a board member, just an update on how decision systems and the conversion is going, and also an update on some, we've had a few little add-on costs that we've had to add so that programs can talk to each other and information can flow from one program to another, and Julia will talk to you a little bit about that. The last thing is, too, is there is a negotiations package, which comes with a price tag with it. Wanted to see if the board was interested in it. We have negotiations coming up with NDEA, and if we use the negotiations package, it could make negotiations a little easier, especially for putting scattergrams and what-if scenarios with different money raises or percentages and stuff like that. So, Julia, you want to talk a little bit about just some of the programs that we had to do, little, some add-ons with?
Right, yeah. Excuse me. The ones, there was $1,000 that you guys had already approved, and that was for additional accounting use and then additional payroll use, and so I did add that on there only because Laverne did not put that on his bill. I mean, that was already approved, but since it's going to show on a new bill, I just wanted to let you know that you'd already approved that, so you don't need to approve that. I would like to have additional users in the purchase order program. We had bought three users in the original, but after we added all the schools, the principals, the secretaries, now to add in the athletic director, the nurse, it seems like there's a lot of people that could get on it, and if you only, we only have three licensed ones to get on, then if the fourth one tries to get on, it boots somebody off. So, we just have run into, he's right now opened it up for more, for convenience for now while everybody's in, but I would really like to purchase, I think that it would be to have at least six in there at one time, so no one gets booted off in the middle.
We just have a lot of different people that need to be able to...
To be able, I mean, we're trying to get them used to getting in and getting out. I mean, there's sometimes people would get in there, do their business, and then forget to close the account, and then no one else could get in, and so, we're trying to get people used to doing, getting in and getting out. The automatic signing of the purchase orders, that one, I overlooked on that one, and I should have brought that to you in the beginning. I do see every single purchase order that comes through. It comes to the system, I have to approve it before it moves on, but once it gets on to Kaylee, then if she prints them off or sends them to the schools, they can print it, print it, it automatically has my signature on the purchase order, so I don't have to sit and hand sign every single purchase order. So, after seeing that, and plus, besides that, he puts on the purchase order and then down in the corner that we are paying attention to the wage. What's that? The prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage.
And we had got hit at Rockton about it not being on our purchase order from, who are they? Union people or?
Union stewards.
The union stewards came to us about that, so I just wanted to make sure we could get that as part of the price, too, is to add that on every single purchase order that we recognize the prevailing wage. The other one was the template for $150. That came to me from a couple of secretaries saying that they have purchase orders that they do over and over and over again, and Laverne had, when I told, asked him about that, and I said, "Well, this is what they're requesting. What do you have?" He goes, "Oh, yeah, I thought this were, it's just, they can keep the template out there, and they can use it over and over and over again to the same vendor. They don't have to recreate it. They can adjust a little bit here and there and use that same template." Would save them time. So that was a request of them, and I did remove the automatic voiding after having and talking to Laverne about it, I said that we wouldn't need that, so that's a credit of $350. I said, "We wouldn't need that, because we don't void that many checks." In the payroll area, there was a $300, actually $400, because we already paid $100, $400 charge to, for him to create a program to be able to pull out the information, the staff, telephone numbers, the emails, and they take like four or whatever, how many emails or telephone numbers that we have, and sends it to the staff if we have school closing or anything like that.
For school messenger, yeah.
For school messenger, and it saves Kathy a lot of time of hand putting in everybody. So that was that. Employee comments, I would like to have that, because this is a place where we can put a comment on the employee's pay record, and it stays there forever. For instance, if someone came in and they took a leave of absence, I could put that on there that they took a leave of absence from this time to this time, adjusted their pay record, down so many they had a deduction or whatever. That would stay on their record for as long as we owned this program, and that would be nice to have, because a lot of times you don't know or anytime that something happened, if they move up on the salary schedule, they turn in credits. I could say, "Hey, they turned credits in on this date, and they moved up on the salary schedule, and we changed the pay on this date." So it would be nice to have that. The other one is the zero earnings on a paycheck. We have found out, well, as through the conversion, I have found out that there was a lot of pay paid to the wrong accounting code in the payroll syst, or in the accounting system, and this allows me to go in and make those corrections in their pay record, and it sends it to the accounting and gets it to the right accounting, and I don't have to, and even it's like with people that have left and no longer work here anymore, I can still make those corrections, and I don't have to issue them a paycheck. So that was $125. And the other one is the ability to print direct deposits on blank paper. That's another one I should have seen, and as we were going through it, I would not, you know, when people put it on a, people have direct deposit. When it's on a check, it just fills in the blanks, but if you're doing it on a blank sheet of paper, it has to print everything, so, so when you print a blank sheet of paper for a check on a piece of paper form, it prints out everything on it, the bank information and everything, so that would be that. It just looks nicer and cleaner. And then the last piece was the negotiation program, which is by $1,000. I just wanted to bring this up to you guys to see if you're interested in getting that. It does a lot of reports. It does the scattergrams. Alls we have to do is put in where the teachers are at in the system, and it's good to have that. We're going to do it anyway. If, and we put the original program in and the steps and the percentages, and from that point on, it will place people where they belong, it'll figure exactly how much it's going to cost you in TRS, IMR, now IMR, Medicare, the board chair of TRS, and the THIS, and the medical and the dental benefits, what the cost is going to be for those as well. So once that's all loaded up and negotiations, they could do very smoothly, and it will even upload what the teachers come back to you with as well. So that, I mean, I can definitely have Laverne next month come in and show it to you if you'd wish to rather see it, and then have, you know, give you an example of, I know it's $5,000. I would more than, he'd be more than happy to come and do that as well. So, so out of the 7,900, you had already approved $1,000, so that's 6,900, and one of that is the $5,000, so I'm actually really the 1925, this is the one I'd like them to all, but you go through if you don't want to do the negotiation, if you wanted to wait for Laverne to give you a demonstration. I just want to also let you know that it has gone very, very smoothly. We're working just fine, no payroll complaints. Our new girl has caught on very quickly doing the payroll, and so is Kaylee, who's going next to jump.
I guess where I was at, I was wondering whether or not we wouldn't be better served to vote on the additions to the original contract and handle the negotiation piece as a separate piece, because it's something that is completely different than what we thought initially as far as going to solve it in here, so, I'm not imploding on the whole , I guess, of the entire piece, but just throwing that out there, see if that makes sense to anybody. It seemed like for us to probably vote on the addendums or the adjustments to the original contract first, and we'll actually be separate. So how much money do we vote on in the beginning? $12,000?
Oh, well, no, that, I forgot that piece of the, the $12,000 was for the conversion, and it did wind up being a lot more, and I did put that in the explanation of how much time that Laverne and Levi spent moving weekends going through the conversion, because Sun Guard was absolutely no help. I called them, I emailed them, we had a freeway conference with them on the phone, with Laverne and I, and they, the things that we were asking for, they said, "Well, you can get that off of, we can't do any better than that. You can get that off of the, what was that, the, what is that program? Oh, which is it? Cognos, I said, Cognos, I mean, you can get it off Cognos." And the way the information came off of Cognos was, it was a little bit over here in this report, a little bit over here in this report, and a little bit in, Laverne had to spend hours trying to bring each of those together and being able to keep them to that person's record to be able to upload them to his account. He spent well more hours than what he billed thus far, and that was at this.
And what was this going to originally cost annually?
On annual basis after that? Okay, I have the bill, the original...
I'm just trying to remember, is that what we approved?
The original bill was $48,000 for the whole piece, and you would do it in three installments for three years, and it came to $16,308 per year. That was the original one that I came to about, and it was a horrible estimate of $12,000 to do the conversion, and he, and I gave you a copy of the conversion, he was right on in the accounting. It was $5,000 to do the accounting, but the payroll is the point that we had so many problems with gathering the data, and we're having, and just a lot of it was key entry. I did a lot of key entering, and he did a lot of manipulating, and he would manipulate it, he'd send it, upload it, and I would look at it and tell where the problems were, and he'd start back over the beginning again. And we did that for, we did that for every weekend almost, from October until December. So that, so it's originally going to be about $10,000 more on the conversion cost, and then the ones that I asked for additional.
Anybody for the discussion or...
I vote to approve the additional costs for the conversion and the other options outside of the negotiating, negotiation piece. I vote to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tom Moon?
Yes.
Ed Mahollen?
Yes.
Brian Rinder?
Yep.
Dan Moore?
No.
Ms. Allison?
Yes.
Joe Hayberly?
Yes.
Brian Rinder?
Yep.
Dan Moore?
No.
Ms. Allison?
Yes.
Joe Hayberly?
Yes.
All right, moving on.
What do you want to do, anything about last piece? Discuss the negotiating piece a little bit.
The Cathy a lot of time and putting in everybody. So that was that. Employee comments, I would like to have that because this is a place where we can put a comment on the employee's pay record and it stays there forever. For instance, if someone came in and they took a leave of absence. I could put that on there that they took a leave of absence from this time to this time, adjusted their pay record down so many they had a deduction or whatever. That would stay on their record for as long as we own this program. And that would be nice to have because a lot of times you don't know or anytime that something happened, if they move up on the salary schedule, they turn in credits. I could say, hey, they turned credits in on this date and they moved up on the salary schedule and we changed the pay on this date. So it would be nice to have that. The other one is the zero earnings on a paycheck. We have found out, well, as through the conversion, I have found out that there was a lot of pay paid to the wrong accounting code in the payroll system or in the accounting system. And this allows me to go in and make those corrections in their pay record and it sends it to the accounting and gets it to the right accounting. And I don't have to, and even it's like with people that have left and no longer work here anymore, I can still make those corrections and I don't have to issue them a paycheck. So that was 125. And the other one is the ability to print direct deposits on blank paper. That's another one I should have seen. And as we were going through it, I would not, you know, when people did on a, people have direct deposit. When it's on a check, it just fills in the blanks. But if you're doing it on a blank sheet of paper, it has to print everything. So, so when you print a blank sheet of paper for a check on a piece of paper form, it prints out everything on it, the bank information and everything. So that would be that, it just looks nicer and cleaner. And then the last piece was the negotiation program, which is by $1,000. I just wanted to bring this up to you guys to see if you're interested in getting that. It does a lot of reports. It does the scattergrams. Alls we have to do is put in where the teachers are at in the system and it's good to have that, we're gonna do it anyway. And we put the original program in and the steps and the percentages. And from that point on, it will place people where they belong. It'll figure exactly how much it's gonna cost you in TRS, IMR, now IMR, Medicare, the board chair of TRS and the THIS and the medical and the dental benefits, what the cost is going to be for those as well. So once that's all loaded up and negotiations, they could do very smoothly and it will even upload what the teachers come back to you with as well. So that, I mean, I can definitely have Laverne next month come in and show it to you if you'd wish to rather see it and then have, you know, give you an example of, I know it's $5,000. I would more than, he'd be more than happy to come and do that as well. So, so out of the 7,900, you had already approved a thousand, so that's 6,900. And one of that is the 5,000, so I'm actually really the 1925, this is the one I'd like them to go through if you don't wanna do the negotiation, if you wanted to wait until the calendar and give you a demonstration. I just wanna also let you know that it has gone very, very smoothly. We're working just fine, no payroll complaints. Our new girl has caught on very quickly doing the payroll and so is Bailey from doing the next good job.
I guess where I was at, I was wondering whether or not we wouldn't be better served to hold on, you know, additions to the original contract and handle the negotiation piece as a separate piece. Is it something that is completely different than what we thought initially as far as going into this all, but in here, so I'm not imploding on the whole, I guess, of the entire piece, but just throwing that out there. See if that makes sense to anybody.
Yeah.
For us to probably vote on the addendums or the adjustments to the original contract first and then the actual lease settlement. So how much money do we vote on in the beginning, $12,000?
Oh, well, no, that, I forgot that piece of the, the $12,000 was for the conversion and it did wind up being a lot more. And I did put that in the explanation of how much time that Laverne and Levi spent many weekends going through the conversion because Sun Guard was absolutely no help. I called them, I emailed them, we had a freeway conference with them on the phone, with Laverne and I, and they, the things that we were asking for, they said, well, you can get that off of, we can't do any better than that. You can get that off of the, what was that, the, what is that program? Which is it? Cognos, I think, Cognos, I mean, you can get it off Cognos. And the way the information came off of Cognos was it was a little bit over here in this report, a little bit over here in this report, and a little bit in, Laverne had to spend hours trying to bring each of those together and being able to keep them to that person's record to be able to upload them to his account. He spent well more hours than what he billed thus far. And that was that piece.
And what was this gonna originally cost annually?
On annual basis after that? Okay, I have the bill, the original.
I'm trying to remember, is that what we approved?
The original bill was $48,000 for the whole piece. And you would do it in three installments for three years. And it came to $16,308 per year. That was the original one that I came to about. And it was a horrible estimate of $12,000 to do the conversion. And he, and I gave you Cathy the conversion, he was right on in the accounting. It was $5,000 to do the accounting, but the payroll is the point that we had so many problems with gathering the data. And we're having, and just a lot of it was key entry, I did a lot of key entering and he did a lot of manipulating and he would manipulate it, he'd send it, upload it, and I would look at it and tell where the problems were and he'd start back over the beginning again. And we did that for, we did that for every weekend almost, from October till December. So that, so it's originally gonna be about $10,000 more on the conversion cost and then the ones that I asked for additional.
Everybody for the discussion or? Motion? I approve the additional costs for the conversion and the other options outside of the negotiating, negotiation piece. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Karen Moon?
Yes.
Adam Allen?
Yes.
Ryan Rander?
Yep.
And more?
No.
And Ellen?
Yes.
The paper?
Yes. All right, moving on. What do you want to do, anything about last piece? Have a discussion on negotiating piece a little bit. So essentially, Julia, we're gonna get a scattergram that those people on the negotiating may can use, they'll share it with the unions as well, if they have the ability to use it and go forward from there.
Right, I'm not sure if they, the union has the ability to do a scattergram at this time. I don't know if they used it the last time, I wouldn't know, but that would be a good take up for them to have that. So we're both using the same data and understanding that from the negotiations.
We are on the negotiation, I think that's valuable. Well, definitely have value on, on the board side, on the administration side. Last time we did scattergrams, they were with Sun Guard, they created with Sun Guard.
I don't think you did say a scattergram with Sun Guard because you had a five-year contract with a four-year, four-year contract and Sun Guard only had for two years.
At the last negotiation we did, we used scattergrams, how it was for you.
You mean with Envest?
Yeah.
I did that, I made that.
That would be much smoother, much easier, less time intensive, less labor intensive too.
Very much less labor intensive to do that. The period, what happens with the decision system, if you load it up, all their, with their placement on the salary schedule, everything that, once you settle and you put in the contract, it uploads that into the payroll as well and it will do that for five years. So there's a benefit on the backside as well, plus you could use, take what, if you're gonna share your spreadsheets with them or your, they could bring in a new, you know, schedule that they want to work off of. And then we would be able to upload that into decision systems and be able to find out what the money, because they might come back to you and say, well, this is what we think, we want this, but they may not give you the cost of what they're asking for. This way, we could load it up and say, well, this is, go back and say, hey, this is gonna cost this money. And, and I could do that for them as well and say, hey, this is the cost and give it back to them.
If you don't do that, then we're doing it by hand again, that's a lot for our time in the negotiation process.
Plus, there's a lot more teachers than there are, eh? So I'm doing that.
This does is it speeds that process there to provide you an accurate number for you.
Right, and I wouldn't, I'd be able to get you just salaries if I'm doing it by hand, I'm not gonna be able to get you benefits, I'm not gonna be able to get you Medicare or TRS, I'm not gonna be able, the board chairs are all those as a whole cost for them. You just get the salaries all, if I could do that.
All the group. Approve, second, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Yes.
Yes. So making the plug item C, board superintendent goals. Yeah, in your packet, I, based on our last board goals meeting, I roughly put some goals together for staffing. There's also something there for curriculum, based on our conversations. Rough draft, I kinda turned it over to you as board members to say, what do you like? What do you want to tweak? What do you wanna edit, move? It wasn't in the, yeah, I checked up. Or that's a bad, I have a point in my next, I don't know. I don't think I have a move, I have an extra copy here, I'll make something. Actually, I think about five or six. It's in the packet, right?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Okay, so I take input from the board, either approve them or tweak them or? Give us the feedback of what's on the board. I guess I'll start the conversation. One of the concerns that I shared with Mike was that there weren't enough metrics and it might was good enough to leave it open for us to decide what we wanted those metrics to be. And I think that he's right in saying that those are our decisions to make. Would have, I'd like to see some kind of goal for student achievement, whether it's a percentage or for some kind of movement in test scores, be part of it. I always looked at this process as a shared responsibility between Mike and us. This doesn't fall any harder than Mike's lap than it does on the other side of us. This is really the reason that I, I thought that I liked this process because it holds all of us accountable to a certain level of it. It also provides a platform at which we see our successes but also see what our challenges are. There's motivation, I think, on both sides then to have discussions of all those challenges when they pop up rather than wait for metrics to be handed down by the state at the end. So I don't know whether we want to try and cash that out tonight, what those metrics ought to be, or whether we want to get together and try and set it separate place with just, with just us and have those conversations. I respect whatever, whatever the group wants to do. Appreciate the work that Mike put in and given us an opportunity to get going. And just wanted to be clear from, I guess, from a foundational standpoint that this isn't, this is a shared responsibility between Mike and us to make these, make this stuff happen. We all have, we're all accounted for. So whatever we put in here, doesn't reflect differently than Mike and those on the other side of us.
Logical progression for us would be to meet one more time and go back through all of those, write out some goals as specific as we want. I'd like to see in the end product have goals that have been decided upon by everybody. Increase ownership. I too felt that at least a few of them didn't have much of a metric to them. I'd like to see some, some specifics, a few more specifics. With the understanding that those are our goals. I don't know if, if ultimately from these goals, we start pulling out a few, if that's the plan, they'll become superintendent goals also, or ultimately, I would imagine all of them will become on some level, goals for him.
I would respect that if that's the decision that everybody went, but that's not how I saw this working when we started. I saw it as a shared responsibility so that Mike didn't feel any more pressure than the rest of us did to, you know, to work towards these goals. I mean, I, I think that it would be grossly unfair for us to set metrics aside solely for the reason of beating Mike up in an evaluation process. That's, that's the last thing that I want this to turn into.
Exactly, I would agree with that also.
So we're gonna have another meeting, would we like for it to be just a board or would you?
Yeah, I think, I think we, yeah, no, we need Mike's input too. We're gonna share him.
And we just wanna have that before the March meeting?
If we can.
Is there anything we wanna talk about for these? We think this is a good track to run and we just wanna stick some metrics to them.
I guess what I would challenge the group to do is to look at these then and go home and begin to think about, you know, what kind of measures was there, that there should be on some of these so that at least if we need foundational data, Mike and the staff have a chance to prepare that for us well in advance so that when we sit down this time, we're gonna hammer out a document that we can work through. So kinda look at this and think about, you know, what challenges you think that are on there, what things that you think that you wanna see addressed and, you know, let's sit down and have a productive meeting, get it done.
I would say that right now, just looking at it shortly, the goal, the goal is gonna have to be in all the actions and if you look at this first one here, we only have one of the actions in the goal. We have increase, enhance, and support of, support to students. And really, the only thing in this goal that I see is the exit surveys and the retention in the action. And you can look through the whole thing like that, and I think Joe was kinda alluding to this earlier. They should be time bound, they should, there should be some result orientation to them. It's no different than the, the goals we're putting on our teachers these days and we've increased them drastically. So how are they gonna meet their goals with no end game? And not be time bound?
I was kind of envisioning something where we had, maybe it'd start with something like this, but it's kind of up on the board and we think about how we want it worded and whether we want numbers in there or no numbers in there. Start talking due dates, end dates, start dates. And that can kind of happen right in front of us. And this has staffing and curriculum, are we not gonna, are we gonna leave facilities and parental involvement, were those the other two? Are we gonna leave those out for now?
I mean, I think Mike rightfully listened to the conversations and although there were issues there, they certainly weren't the priorities. The priorities seemed to be student achievement and staffing. And so, you know, we're open to that, bring those discussions to the table, but, you know, Mike rightfully, I think, looked at the notes and, and when we talked about it, I mean, he was, he was spot on and this is what, where the group wanted to focus.
So what I hear, we're setting a date then? Joe, you're out of town the week of March 6th through the 10th, right? Would next week on Tuesday work?
Twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth.
Is that enough time to put together the?
What was the night, Mike?
Uh, it's the 28th, it'd be a week from tonight, we'd just keep it kinda like to, what'll be another Tuesday night type board meeting, Tuesdays work well. And it's just, well, obviously be an open meeting, but mainly the board and me getting together to finalize the wording.
If we want foundational data, Mike, you would like it by?
That's tight.
Well, I'm just, we use, we use that as short porch, I, you know, I wanna give you a fair.
We have, yeah, 'cause we have the curriculum meeting and policy meeting, the 13th. If Joe's out of town the week of the 6th, that's really, it's either next week or two weeks after that. And then we're right up on the board meeting again.
So you'd probably like something by Thursday night.
Yeah. Yeah, that would work.
Is everybody okay with that? If you got foundational data, if you want, if you have benchmarks that you want, you will get that stuff to Mike by Thursday night?
Thursday, the 2nd, the 16th? Yeah, the 2nd will be fine also.
I'm out of town, I have to go to an Alvarez conference Thursday, Friday, of the 2nd and the 3rd of March.
That's what I'm talking, so.
I mean, we could even go Wednesday. And then I could give you till Friday. Does that work?
March 1st? Does that work for everyone? 6:30 works for everyone?
What was the date again, man?
March 1st.
March 1st, it's a Wednesday night, next week on Wednesday, March 1st, 6:30. And I, you can give me something all the way up until, I'd say end of the workday Friday. That'll give you enough time to do it, yeah. Runs downhill opposed to Jake anyways. That would work though. That'll give you a little more time to look through it, think about it. If there's any baseline data.
That's all we need on that item. So March 1st. Now, moving on to new business, February 20th.
Man, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, would it make sense to try and get that entire document that you and I have access to out to the group? This, no, the one from 203.
Sure, I can forward that one on.
Email it out to everybody or? Sorry, Matt?
Nope, we're just scheduling a meeting. Oh, you're fine. Yep, I can send that out, I'll do that tomorrow. And they can kinda see how they format it and set it up. I tried to do it the same, it's not quite as pretty as theirs.
Okay, so now we move on to the February 2017 bills, which were those led by Tom?
I went through the bills, I didn't find anything that stuck out, so I was making a motion to approve.
Motion by Louie, the second by Maxi. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ryan Rander?
Yep.
Dan Ward?
Yes.
Dan Allison?
Yes.
Joe Hingeray?
Yes.
And Maxi?
Yes.
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 All right, then we'll move on to item B, approval of registration fees, 2017, 2018.
Yep, you saw in your packet, we set registration dates. We had very good turnout, very good responses back from parents, especially early registration at our younger levels. And good feedback too on a $25 discount for early registration. Not looking to up the prices at all, we'll hold them exactly the same, same way, so just approved as the same rate as what they were last year.
What kind of success rate did we have getting fees paid?
I don't know, I didn't look at it this year as far as what percentage of people, because that's in power school, we haven't, never asked anybody.
We could look for something and get some back.
We'll look for that.
I was just curious, you guys made some changes to the process last year, I was curious about whether, you know.
And I don't have data to back it up, but a lot of my secretaries felt like people were paying.
Right, they were.
A little more willingly because if they could get the $25 discount. But I, again, it's not data backing it up, it's just an initial thought from those, my secretaries.
Is there a way to make the paperwork part of that, something that can be done online? Proof of residency, you know, whatever else documentation that's out there?
That's something we've talked about, every school talks about for years and years and years, is can we do this online? But if you make it just online, you're gonna have a lot of people in this district that don't have access to computers and would not do that online. And then trying to, they're still gonna have to present their proof of residence coming into the school. I'm not, personally, I'm not a big fan of doing it online. I like that personal touch with the parent at registration. I think they see a lot of people. I don't know what other people think, that's just my opinion.
I will say this much, I, if we're gonna have people come in anyway, you know, there are a number of people who do have online. So if we're gonna do online, you're still gonna have to come in and prove your residency. I haven't seen anything where you're able to submit that electronic. I mean, I know you can scan something in, but I think you have to show that in person, a lot of things, there has to be a notary who signs off on certain things too. But as far as everything else electronic goes, we could open up the computer lab in high school still for those who don't have. You know, we, I mean, we have, we have the cows, we could set them up, you know, for people to be able to use if they don't have.
It'd be a big conversion, what we do.
In collecting data.
We saw a number of presentations at the trade show from companies that do exactly what Jake just said we can't do. It's all drop down, yes, you're gonna have people who need to come in, don't have access to a computer. But if you could take out 50 or 60% of the people who don't.
Are we doing that with the elementary though already?
Elementary does mail in, yeah.
They do the mail in, elementary does. So we're at this point just doing the middle school, high school.
What we did was, and then we came back to the middle school and the high school and based on our conversations that we held with the number of fees and sports and activities and extracurriculars and stuff, they felt that they wanted walk-in registrations and fees and stuff could be paid there.
It's funny, they mean, they give you guys the feedback, they want walk-in and all we hear is, do we really have to be at the school?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it, my idea would be, is, I'd like to get there.
Let me, doesn't have anything to do with this, I understand.
No, that's right, so we'll set the fees, let me talk to tech and see what all it involves, how that affects Power School, talk to the secretaries and say, what are the issues we'll have, and we'll, we'll look at it. I don't know if I'll get it done this year, but boy, if we could get that in the next year or two.
Well, maybe we could have a pre-registry, and this year we could have two lines, people that pre-registered online, they're bringing in their important documents, and the other people over here, they're at ground zero.
Well, there's a lot at this time, at the time of residency, people have to prove their free reduced lunch at that time as well, so they have to bring in their documentation of what they make for, to get their fees waived, or to get on the free lunch, and you guys are running thirty-five plus forty, thirty-five to forty percent free reduced here, so you're gonna have those thirty-five, forty people having still to come in.
Not opposed to it.
We gotta get you guys down to the trade floor when you go to conference, so you can talk to some of these people.
But those, they're all at a cost.
I'm not opposed to it, Tom.
If there's nothing else, I would, when you said we don't have the data, is it possible by next year to have?
I'll look at it.
I'd love to go and look at it, and, and see what these other schools are doing, I mean, we tried at Rockland, we, we did mail-in, but it backfired on us when we said you could walk it in, because five hundred people walked it in, expected a receipt and everything right then and there, so it was like, so, how did this help a mail-in?
The other problem, at that time, we also were having a lot of residency things, too, where people were looking with falsification, so we were trying to be pretty stringent on that, too, so, but, but that was also, we don't have as much moving around now as what we had way back when things were moving, so.
Right.
And I know that that was what we were watching here, too, was residency stuff. I can look into it.
I digress, I moved to approve.
Move.
Second.
Motion to approve the second. Roll call.
Dan Ward?
Yes.
Matt Allison?
Yes.
Joe Hagerly?
Yes.
And Maxi?
Yes.
And Mahalal?
Yes.
Ryan Renninger?
Yep.
And Dan Ward?
Yes.
Matt Allison?
Yes.
Motion carries, we move to executive session. For the appointment employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, legal counsel for the public body, including carrying testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, and collectively negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Second.
Sorry, Tom.
That's all right.
Motion second, roll call.
Joe Hagerly?
Yes.
And Maxi?
Yes.
And Mahalal?
Yes.
Ryan Renninger?
Yep.
And Dan Ward?
Yes.
Matt Allison?
Yes.
Motion carries, we move to executive session. All of those holding hands and walking right now. That was nice. That was the worst. We have a great meeting. Good night, Brian. Good night.